So the official gavel to start the meeting. Welcome, and we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome to the first school board meeting of the year. September 10th. We have, I have an agenda here that I'm looking at after the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a note here about public input. We always provide at least 30 minutes for public input, so we'll sort of start that time right now. Is there anyone that wanted to provide public input? I don't see anyone, but if someone comes, comes into the room, hopefully they'll, they'll get our attention. If someone notices in the crowd, so to speak, that someone wants to speak up, you know, make sure they let us know because we'll pause the meeting where we are and make sure that we have an opportunity for someone to speak to us. Next, we have visitors, and we have a note here about new staff. So I don't know if one of the principals would want to come forward. We have a new staff member that's with us here. Yeah.
Sure, I'd like to take just a quick moment to introduce Shawn Hanson, who is our support technician, split between Main Street and Lincoln Street schools. A position that is new to both buildings this year. So welcome, Shawn.
Welcome.
Welcome, Shawn. Shawn, can we impose on you to come up and tell us something about yourself?
Fun fact?
Yeah. I'm sure they heard.
Yeah.
All right, yes, so my name is Shawn Hanson. As Ryan said, I'm going to be split between the two schools. I came from, if any are familiar with Central Catholic High School, so the last eight and a half years I've been at Central Catholic doing some of their IT stuff and had this opportunity to come here and pretty thankful to be here, so yeah.
That's great. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
You too. Appreciate you already making a contribution by actually turning on the microphone. That's very helpful. Well, that's how good team works, apparently, yes. Yeah, so welcome, and we know that there's some other staff members that have joined the district, and we certainly welcome all of them. It's great to have that energy within our, within our group. All right, next we have on the agenda the PTO, an update from the PTO. See, you're positioned in the front row.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Bailey, one of the PTO co-presidents.
And I'm Sarah Dewitt.
And yeah, we just wanted to come and introduce ourselves, tell you a little bit about our plans for the year. I think our main goals for the year, other than the obvious of supporting our teachers and staff and doing whatever we can for the schools, we're really trying to kind of increase the parental and guardian involvement in the schools through our community events, through getting more volunteers into, not necessarily into the classrooms, there's, you know, if they can, great, but also in just involvement in the school in general, in the school community. So we are starting, our first meeting is actually on Thursday, and it's at 5:30 to 7:00 at Main Street School Library, and we're actually doing a pizza party for the kids at the same time in the gym, so we're really trying to get more parents who might not be able to have childcare that way. So we've got some PEA and EHS students coming to watch the kids and have a little involvement that way. So we've already got, you know, 30 kids signed up and lots of parents signed up to join us, so we're hoping to kind of increase the involvement this year.
And just an update of things that we've done since we've started is we had a big welcome back to teachers. They all got a welcome back gift from the PTO for Lincoln Street and Main Street, and then we provided breakfast for them after, before the training? Before the training. And for the meet and greet, we bought a whole bunch of spirit wear, so if anybody needs a sweatshirt or a tee shirt or anything, let us know, because we got some extra to be able to sell at events and everything. But we're hoping to really bring community into the schools and do more events and always open to ideas and everything, too, if you ever want to let us know. That's it.
Thank you.
Folks have any questions for our comments?
Oh, I am. You might not be ready to say, but are there sort of, when you say community events, I know there are some longstanding ones, are there sort of new goals you have for community events that you're sort of thinking about?
Well, so we have a few. So one, we're looking at doing like a glow stick night was one of the ideas that came up. One of the biggest things that we're really trying to do is actually kind of create the, the events that are already happening, like steam night, for example, turning that into more of a community event. So rather than having it just be the teachers who are running it, we were talking to Ms. Carlosi about doing maybe some food trucks, bringing it into like more of a bigger event, and then also kind of integrating our fundraising into that as well, so that it's less of, hey, come to this auto thing, come to this other thing, we're kind of, we're getting too many touchpoints. Rather than doing that, kind of trying to integrate it all into larger community events, if that makes sense. So we have a few other ideas, and then obviously on Thursday, we're hoping to generate some ideas from the larger community, but that's kind of our starting point for now. I don't know if there's anything else that...
We don't want to bite off too much. So we're really just trying, since it's our first year, we're just trying to like get into the groove and like the board is great, and we're just trying to build on the events that we already have and sprinkle in a couple new ones.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, we're big fans of the PTO, so it's, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have administrative updates, starting with the fiscal year '24 review.
So I did bring the manifest, there's, okay, oh, they're over there. And then also is the cover page for the DOE and the MS-25. So the DOE goes to the DOE, and the MS-25 goes to the Department of Revenue. So last June, when we met, we expected an unassigned fund balance of $1.2 million. It was down to 1.1 because we authorized all those facilities projects, which was partially offset by a little bit of decreased costs when we closed all of the purchase orders of items that came in less than cost or just weren't used. So did anyone have any questions? We will do the first report for the current year in October, because we're just getting started, so we're building all the encumbrances, getting everything built. So the next time we'll meet, we'll talk about current year. Did anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Too many things here. Just an update on Parent Square. We're getting a great response from people that that app is way easier to use. Obviously, we did some mass messaging today with CMS, and that worked exceptionally well. As you may recall, our first snow day with our old AMA system, it did not work well. And so we switched over to Parent Square, and I think an advantage is not only that people can build groups, there's also a lot more ways you can use that as a user on the app, and we'll continue to push out information on that for parents. They can opt in to only get a text or things like that. Now, if it's a urgent something that overrides that and you still would get all three, for example, a first snow day or a critical situation, but if you don't want to get every school calendar pushout or everything like that on all three, you can say, I just want it via text or something like that, and I think parents are appreciating that also. Also, you can build all the sports teams in it, which is super helpful for parents that have kids in three buildings. They're finding that really, really nice to just be able to go to one place on their app and be like, okay, that practice is running, that one's changed, instead of going to each school website or trying to track that down. So it seems like it's meeting a need around communication, and that was one of those recommendations from that SAU-16 communications survey, to look at other ways to ease communication for parents and access. So hopefully, that's one small step we're making towards achieving some of those goals also. Any questions on Parent Square?
I'm just, I, I love it, so thank you for, for everyone who, you know, is, and I'm sure as things go, it'll like iterate and you'll get feedback, but I, I think it's, as someone who has kids in multiple schools, it's been great. I'm curious, do you know how many, like what percentage of families have signed on to it, or how, you know, if it's being, if there's high engagement with it, or?
Yes, Jason Hills, our tech director, gave me that, and I can look it up on my email, but I think to date, as of last week, it was close to 68% so far.
Wow, that's good.
So, but don't quote me on that, it might have been 62%, one of those two.
I think the only thing I've heard feedback on is just, I think, people I know have signed up, and then they have it, I get it on my phone, it's not always intuitive like to know, oh, there's the groups, you know, so just like reminding people where to find things as we get used to using it, but I think it's, I've been impressed how easy it is once you kind of figure out how to navigate it.
Thanks. The other adaptation was there was no opt-out to get texts for the sports groups, and so now we fixed that, so there is that option, because we got feedback like, I don't want to get every single thing, I just want to be able to check. So that went out to be able for parents to also opt out to get messages if they wanted to, if they were in a sports group. Primarily high school feedback.
Just from the engagement standpoint, though, there's nothing that's going out on the app that people, if they don't want the app, can't find on the website?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I don't know about athletics. I would have to ask Kathy Clareman and Stephon, our two athletic directors, about that. I know that the high school has lots of different spaces to find out about athletics. I'm not as positive about CMS.
Okay.
I just made myself a reminder to give you your board stipend form, so please fill that out, most of you already have, and give that back to me. And my only other thing is that I have gotten positive feedback now that we had that kind of extended professional days at the beginning of the year. I think in the, originally, there was a hesitation, because it felt early for teachers and paraprofessionals to come back, but then, once it occurred, I will say, by the time convocation came, it had a much more relaxed feel from my point of view. People didn't seem as anxious, just because they'd had a couple days in their classroom, and they were kind of feeling, I think, more comfortable, and I'm looking for confirmation from folks, but that's the feedback I got, so that was good, because there was some initial like, what, we have to come back, you know, earlier? But I think people appreciated that time, particularly paraprofessionals and special education, to make that communication link. I think it was very helpful. So thanks to the board for kind of test running that and seeing how that went, and then, of course, we'll do the calendar work in a month, in a few months, but just initial feedback seemed very positive around that, so thank you for that. And lastly, this is more a policy issue. You may be aware that the Title IX regulations, legal regulations have changed a bit, so essentially, the spirit of Title IX and laws is the same, but there have some been, has been some changes. Those changes went into effect August 1st. You will see a new policy come to this board in November. The policy committee will meet in October, but I just want to assure people that we are adhering to the new Title IX regulations that went into effect. We've adjusted our sexual harassment processes and protocols accordingly, and then the policy committee will review the updated draft, policy ACAC, at the October meeting, and we'll come to you in November. But we are adhering to the new ones, which is what the law requires, so we're not out of compliance with the law, but it just takes us a little time with the way with our structure to get that policy through the committee and then to boards. So I just didn't want people to think that we weren't addressing those changes, along with many others, but that seems to be the most important one right now with that August 1st implementation. Any questions? Other than that, we're off to a great start. Buildings are happy, and I just, when I walk through, as usually as usual, we're very fortunate in Exeter, everybody's pretty upbeat, and our kids are, I just, I'm always amazed at how excited they are to be back and how already engaging they are in the work. So kudos to all of you for doing that, and to parents for getting them into the swing of things. I know that first week can sometimes feel long and tiring, but certainly appreciate your efforts at home, as well as the paras, the administrators, and certified positions, and making all those things happen for our kids, so thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. Last time that we met as a board was in June, so we have June 11th, public meeting minutes from both, our meeting minutes from both a public meeting and a non-public meeting. So I don't know if folks have had a chance to look at those and look for a motion to approve them or amend them, if there's a need of amendment.
Are you guys ready? Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes from June 11th.
Second.
2024.
A second. Okay, is there any discussion about the minutes? Okay, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then one abstention. Yep, one abstention. Okay. All right, so next up, we have the reports from the principals, and we have Main Street School listed first.
That's what I was telling Beth on the way, and we should be marking things off as we go. Well, welcome, it's been, I hope everyone had a good summer. There's, there was a lot of things that have happened, so I'm going to kind of go through the list a little bit quickly, just because of all of the summer activities. So we successfully ran summer school for both Tier Two kids and for special education. Some of the summer work that happened at my school, we had a rubber ice surface, we have that installed spinner, I'm sure you guys have been out and have seen it, hopefully you think that it looks good. I think it looks really nice, and it's been fun to see all of our kids be able to use the equipment out there. We had two bathrooms redone, we had windows and floor in our steam room redone, we had the music room flooring redone, and we had roof repairs. So there was a lot of stuff that those guys did over summer, so thank you to Facilities, because I think they were a little bit stretched thin, and they did an awesome job and were lovely to work with, so I really appreciate that. We also, just as far as education work from our staff, we had our Summer Institute that the SAU holds. Our team worked on their Benchmark Advanced Unit, so again, that's like our new ELA adoption that, if you recall, and so they were really just looking at like, how do we streamline that and build vertical alignment, and make sure that everybody felt comfortable coming back in and using it out the gate? And so so far, it's felt pretty successful, so I appreciate that time that they were able to work on those, those types of things. We also took both Lincoln Street and Main Street. If you recall, I mentioned that we were taking a very large group of educators to Charlotte, North Carolina for a PLC, which is a professional learning community conference, and so there was a lot of really good discussions, and we're going to hold some mini PDs on some of those topics, and the teachers are going to lead those, because we went to a bunch of different sessions. And so we're going to kind of do like a train the trainer, and they're going to come back and share some of that information, which is really nice. And then our admin team has talked about, something that they kept reiterating there is like a mission vision, being really clear about that and some shared goals, and so that's work that we're going to do with both of our leadership teams, and then bring them together to do some alignment on just like Exeter school mission vision goals, and making sure that we're all working towards the same things. We also, let's see, it's been a great few weeks back, it's always fun to have kids back in the building, there's like a really fun energy when they come in. We only had a few criers, which is great. We had preschool that came over and helped with kindergarteners come in, which was kind of awesome, because a lot of them, that was a familiar face to get them in the building. So it was, it's just been fun to see all the kids back in there. We are getting ready to start our universal assessments, so that we can start early intervention. We are in the process of seeing students who were last picked up at the end of the school year, so that they're our first group, we're not waiting, they came in, we saw you last, let's see where you are on skills, while we are doing all of our universal testing. So we're, we're starting all that stuff pretty early to make sure that we're catching kids early on. Today, we had our in-service day, we had our, our paras and other support staff, and actually quite a bit of other staff that are not classroom teachers necessarily, that received de-escalation training from Diana. And then in the afternoon, they also received some trauma-informed decision-making tools at the SAU, so there was good training there, and our classroom teachers were also working on their Benchmark Advanced training. They were looking at writing today and doing some common rubrics, so that there would be some common expectations across all of the grade-level teachers. We have Open House coming up, September 26th, from 5:00 to 6:30. That's at all of our schools, it's just open doors, families can come when they want, they can wander in between the two schools, and there's no like set schedule, it's just come when you can, walk up the hill, be down, it's just open doors, and families can come in and see the classrooms. I also, I mean, for our PTO, thank you, because our teachers really appreciated, they felt very special. The gifts were nice, they were mason jars that had maps of Exeter on them that are really adorable. The breakfast was super nice, catered breakfast, our staff felt like very seen, and they're appreciative, and so we appreciate all the work of the PTO. We also did a partnership with Exeter Subaru, they selected Main Street School to give us $3,000 for six teach, well, okay, I should say this differently, six teachers divided the $3,000, so they each get 500 bucks, and so they, we did a little ceremony, we had those kids come in, and it was just kind of a random drawing for our certified staff, and then they came out. They also put up some great displays at Exeter Subaru that were adorable, but it's just a nice community partnership, so that was really cool, and that happened last week. And then lastly, I just wanted to say thanks to, for all of you who use Wheel Right to help fund those, that Four Brains, which was that amplification system. The teachers love them, so they're using them in intervention, they're using them in speech, they're super excited to use them, so thank you for that tool, and that's it.
I have a question about something.
Sure.
I know that when we were, I noticed that in the minutes that we talked about in June, about doing something related to sort of You Belong?
Yes.
Amplifications and improvements. I know a lot of that, the focus was on Lincoln Street, but I don't know if Main Street was able to sort of do anything to fit with that.
So it got a little bit tricky with the timeline. We did, we reached out to quite a few, it's been hard finding some artists and people that have been available. We've tapped, Beth reached out to the high school, middle school art teachers, do you guys have anyone? We reached out, we tried doing some Google searches, we got some feedback, but it was kind of like that deadline was hard to spend it by that date. So we do have some ideas, and we thought it might be a nice opportunity, even with the PTO and some of the other community members that are coming in, to like slow down a little bit and be like, what do we actually want to do that feels good for everyone, instead of just pulling the trigger on something? So we're kind of there, we really tried, and it was hard to spend, and we appreciate it, but we did start thinking, even Ryan, I like, we've talked about a couple of projects between us, and we're like, you know, it would be really nice to get broader input on some of these things that have lasting impact on what the schools and their appearance and have some say in it, so we're kind of there right now, brainstorming.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
For Lincoln Street School, we're off to a great start. We are doing a great job across the building, building communities, setting routines, building all of that, all of that foundational work that's going to pay off as we really turn the corner into learning and teaching and learning. So a big thank you to our staff, and our kids are just doing a really great job, coming in with smiles, it's, it's great to see. We also wanted to just recognize, we had those great days at the beginning of the school year for professional development, we had our second of three Benchmark Training Days, which was great for staff in addition to the Summer Institute, which happened more at the beginning of the summer. So teachers have really had an opportunity to kind of look at how the launch works, how, how that transition into Lesson One works, and it's been very helpful. Also helpful, just having the additional time in the classroom, third grade decided to have their meet and greet in the classrooms, they felt like it would be a healthy thing for not just the kids, but for families to be able to actually see what the learning space is. Yes, we have Open House, but it kind of eases that first day of school anxiety maybe a little bit by just being able to access the building, and, and part of that was just the ability to have the classrooms in a spot where it felt ready to introduce people to, so that was great. Down by our gym, our gym is looking great, if you haven't had a chance to see it, we have the, the big decal that says Home of the Junior Blue Hawks on one end of the gym. The painting is still in progress, but we're getting pretty close on it. The gym is looking really nice, we're excited to be able to continue to share it, not just with our students here, but with the community as Exeter Rex starts to bring some of their programs back in later in the fall. We also have the two bathrooms that were renovated right next to the gym, and that was something that Rusty advocated for right at the end of the school year, so we're very grateful to have that as well. Tanya already went over Open House, but for Lincoln Street School, that will be from 5:30 to 7:00. We're just slightly staggered, just a little bit later than Main Street School, just for families that have to kind of juggle both. We have a lot of things, I mean, I know we're in the third week of school, but we already have cross-country underway that started on Monday. We have Fall Drama Club auditions that were held yesterday, cast lists will be shared out tomorrow. I believe we have Finding Nemo the Musical coming your way soon, just behind you as a matter of fact. Student council elections were held last Friday, their first meeting is this Friday. Beginning Band, we had our Ms. Levergood asked to try to kind of change up the outreach a little bit and really try to help out for beginning, beginning band families, just to make sure that they had the opportunity to ask the questions, and part of it was so that she didn't have to answer the same question email after email, but we had an optional family information night, she kind of described what the program is, the partnership with music and arts, and then had all the instruments displayed out in the back, so students could hold them, not play them, because we're not trying to get through the first wave of germs that quickly, but they could hold them and kind of just feel kind of what felt most comfortable for them. Fifth grade intermediate band starts this week, fourth grade beginning band will start next week, and then, again, I had mentioned this in the spring, but this year violin's an option for fourth and fifth grade students, so we're excited to kind of introduce that program at the Lincoln Street level, the elementary level, and something that they'll be able to really embrace up at CMS. CMS is also very excited to have that coming their way soon. We have after-school enrichment starting up in October, we've got signouts right, signups out right now for teachers to get our, all of our programs organized, we'll be sending out permission slips to families within the next week or two. For our Math Win, that's going to begin tomorrow, our first session of the year. We used some of our spring data, but we didn't want to wait too long while we were collecting and going through our fall data for students to receive some of those Tier Two services, so we're using some of our spring data to do a mini-session, which is just going to be three weeks, and then we'll, that will give us enough time to go through our fall data, which we're finishing up right now, and then we'll go into our normal six-week sessions, so that will be great. We've gone through, just to echo what Tanya had said about the Solution Tree PLC Conference that we went to over the summer with a number of staff members, we had our first learning team meeting of the year today, and the primary agenda item was really going over, like, what are those takeaways that we had that fits kind of where we are as a building right now and can kind of guide us towards those next steps? So we were going through what some of those little mini-presentations would look like and, and how we want that to go, so that was a very productive conversation. Let's see, Benchmark Advanced, teachers are working through the launch, which is really about teaching routines, and they're going to transition to Lesson One probably in the next week or so, and that's also in Ready Math, that's called Lesson Zero, and it's the same type of thing, building their math routines to then transition into the first lesson and the teaching and learning that goes with it. Today, we finished CPR and first aid training for Lincoln Street School staff. We had part of our staff get trained over the winter last year, we brought in an outside trainer for that. Our school nurse, Pam Garrity, became, is a licensed instructor now, and so she was able to do the rest of our staff today in different, three different cycles went through. So we are probably almost at 100% CPR first aid certified, which is something we've been, we were on a kind of like a cycle with, and then we just kind of fell off, but now I think we've got a good plan moving forward. Let's see, just lastly, I know that we'll, we'll talk a little bit about data at our next meeting, but our teachers spent time today going through the spring SAS scores, or New Hampshire SAS scores, and looking at particularly in literacy, kind of where we were, some trends that we saw as a school, areas of strength, areas of weakness. Later in the fall, the state will release the data so that we can look beyond our own district. Right now, we can see how we did, but we can't really see that comparatively, so we'll be able to look at that later on in the fall, but really, I think the biggest takeaway is is going to be looking at our data. You know, it's always, I mean, everybody kind of wants to say like, how do we do compared to, but it's really about where did our kids do really well, where's that growth coming in, what trends are we seeing in both directions, so. And the very last thing, Patrick, because you had asked about, you know, some of those end-of-year funds and the building refresh, we've, we've found a partnership with a local artist, Taylor Rose, that we're excited to be working with, and it's going to be part of that Entryway project that we were talking about, and so we've met with our You Belong team a couple of times, end of last school year and the beginning of this school year, and we're just kind of trying to finalize that vision of what we want around the, yes, belonging, but I think we're going to try to wrap cares into it as well, you know, thinking about like collaboration, advocacy, resilience, empathy, solving problems, and there's a couple other words that we're going to tie into it as well, but those are, we feel like themes that aren't as much time-bound, because we're always going to be promoting those soft skills and, and working to grow students in those areas, so we're excited about what that's going to look like. Taylor Rose does a lot of digital art, so we're going to be incorporating student art, and then she's going to take it and kind of create some digital work with it, and so we're excited about what the final product will look like. And I'm going to turn it over to Deanna to just give a quick summer update on our summer programming, because we were very busy all summer as well.
Hi, so Exeter Summer Skills Academy went great this year. It started July 9th and ended August 8th, it was a five-week program, there were about 72 students that came between Main Street and Lincoln Street, and we partnered with Brown Center again, and I think we're going to do that. There were about 72 students that came between Main Street and Lincoln Street, and we partnered with Brown Center again, and I think we're going to do that again. They're very helpful and they have a team at both campuses. So the activities that they do are very focused towards the great, the age group that's down or here. They work on SEL through structured play. They also give kids an opportunity to do their own thing out at the playground, but they also bring them back to like a structured game through activities. And I got a lot of positive feedback from parents about Brown Center and about the instruction that they were given. There were nine teachers that instructed 72 kids over five weeks. So we'll be able to do it again next year, too. So.
I just want to say how proud I am of our schools for supporting arts and not just the arts instruction, but how you're really involving artists and kids and thinking about how you're creating place. I work in arts education and it is, it's not, it's not in every school district. And I just continually sit here and like, I'm so, I'm like, I'm almost like teary, like really amazed at how supportive we are of the arts and kids creativity. So thank you.
Are there thoughts or comments?
Can I have one more thing? I'm sorry. I don't mean to be long-winded. I have a whole thing about the preschool. So just a quick thing.
Why don't you come up? Why don't you come up?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, that's okay. You still had time left over.
Reminder that I didn't remember.
You didn't match the amount of time that Lincoln Street's.
Thank you. Noted. Did you note that, Ryan? So just the preschool is doing amazing, and there's been a lot of people that have come to visit. So Abby also helps create this little blurb for everyone, but just a couple of things to note that we, we have three dual-certified element, early elementary and special edu, special education teachers in the AM section and two in the PM section. It's just that there's been a higher need and we're having more students who are coming in with referral needs. And so we were able to share the summer, a staff member that is at Main Street School. She's there now in the PM, but she's at the preschool in the morning and she's loving it. And so that third section just is kind of like putting it on everyone's radar that there has been a little bit of an increase in need and also interest at the preschool, which is wonderful, because they're doing really good programming up there. And also that they, we put in that mud kitchen. I don't know if you remember, that was part of some extra funds when we were doing the rubberized surface. And the kids love it. It's adorable. If you haven't been over there, it's super cute. We're going to start getting some materials because they've been, you know, they're cooking and they have all the stuff piled up and fake food and whatever, but they are loving that, too. So Abby just wanted to let you know all of that and say thank you for your support, obviously of the preschool, too. They are also doing some work with Benchmark Advanced and they have done an overhaul, and that's with the help of Carla and with Abby. They've done an overhaul there of talking about how do they embed some of these skills that help the kids be kindergarten-ready but are still age-appropriate and fun and in a playful way. And so they've been really intentional about building some of that programming and making sure that kids are having fun there, but also coming into kindergarten ready. So it's pretty awesome. Okay, that's it.
Yeah.
I also want to add that I just want to recognize Deanna Donley for presenting at the principal's conference. She was asked to present there on the work they're doing, and so thank you for that, as well as Tanya Neve has started the Granite State Leadership Academy where she applied and she's a part of a three-year program and she'll exit with some coursework and a superintendent certification. So kudos to both of you.
So one of the things I, I wanted to do just really quickly before we move on to the next section is just to make sure that these meetings, as we start the new year, are as accessible to everyone that might be watching on TV land as it is to all the educators that are in here. So I heard a couple of acronyms that I'm going to see if, test my own knowledge on whether or not I, I understood what they were. SEL, I think, is a little bit more common for social emotional learning, right? So that's, I, I do think that gets used as shorthand a lot. So a lot of family members and parents would be familiar with that. When, what I need is, right? So that's more sort of self-designed or opportunities to really cater towards individual students. I heard that acronym. SAS is, what does that stand for? I know it's a type of testing. Statewide Assessment System? Okay. So, so when you hear SAS, that's, that's related to the statewide assessments. Any other acronyms that people heard out there as part of the alphabet soup? I mean, I know it's, it's great because it's, you know, I understand why we use acronyms, because they're shorthands for bigger concepts and things. But again, we just want to make sure to extent that we can, that we explain them to folks that might not be as familiar with them. So. Okay. Moving along, we actually have an acronym right at the beginning of our committees. So there's a, known here about committee organization, and I guess that's in terms of the organization part, is that whether or not we want to make any changes with these assignments, so to speak. There's at least one change that we need to make, but there's opportunities to make additional ones if we want to. If people want to swap something or they, now that they know their schedule a little bit more for the fall. If they're, they're not going to be as available, that would make sense to make some of those changes. So I know one of them was with strategic planning, right?
Yeah, I just can't do it scheduling-wise, so I'll need, if there's someone else who's able to.
Is there, is there someone else that's?
When does that one meet, Heather?
Yeah. So the steering committee, the first meeting will be October 24th, and we'll pretty much try to meet that third Thursday of the month. There's a couple because of vacations, et cetera, where that, that date changes a bit. The lift of that will be to, very similar to the communications committee, working through a survey to push out in January regarding strategic planning. And really the role of the board member in that capacity is to look at the survey and make sure that you feel that you're representing the needs of the community to gather input. And where can you engage and advertise in your community? So Seacoast Online for Exeter, other venues that we'll, we ask the board members to really push out and, and get out there. We'll do all the internal and libraries and all the normal things, but sometimes it's helpful that, you know, the rotary, things that maybe you're engaged in or have connections with and advertise that for high community engagement for our strategic planning in March. So we would also ask that all board members, if possible, but certainly the strategic plan rep come to that, and that's the end of March. I think it's Thursday, the 26th, 27th, 28th. So it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Thursday and Friday would be like a five to eight commitment, and Saturday would be a nine to noon. And that's the actual act of the strategic planning to gather the themes and set the agenda for those themes. And then move on from there. We would take it back to the steering committee, the internal steering committee to develop action planning, et cetera. So really, it's a one-year commitment and knock on wood, we get that. Strategic Planning Summit has strong attendance, so we feel good about where we've ended up with our themes and maybe some preliminary action steps or goals out of that. So that's really the lift.
What time of day does that meet?
I believe 5:30. It might be 6:00. Pretty sure it's 5:30. Let me check my calendar.
So I, after getting the DEIJ calendars, I do have a conflict. It feels like it's the first Thursday of every month, which I also have a conflict for. So Heather, I don't know if you want to switch.
You want to switch with me? When is it?
There, they appear to be the first Thursday of the month.
At what time?
3:15.
Is it in person?
There's Zooms on them, I believe.
I think I, I could possibly do that if it's remote. I couldn't do it if, if it's, yeah. I could maybe do that.
I could tag team with you, too.
Okay. I would like to be on it.
I'm certainly able to attend anyhow, so certainly have at least one member, so.
All right.
I don't know that there's a Zoom. Sorry.
Has it been remote or has it been in person?
It had been in person.
It's been, yeah.
We had a couple of Zooms at the end of last year. Just to get people together.
If I can't make it, you can make it. That's, I can, I can tell you.
I think the issue with the strategic plan is we just have one board member that's on that right now, and Heather's not available to attend.
So I can pick that one up.
Okay.
If it meets after 5:00, you said 5:30?
5:30 to 6:30, only because oftentimes another meeting starts at 6:30. So that's, we, you know, and, and again, they're not usually long. It's usually a check-in with the qualtrics, the survey, did we make the adjustments and, and, you know, it's really about advertising and trying to engage your community to come to the March and fill out the survey and then come to March is really what we're hoping for.
In person? Where?
I mean, there's no reason you couldn't zoom in. So, because it's a school-based committee. We usually have it at the conference room at the SAU.
Okay. I can take that one.
Thank you. Did you want to do DEIJ, Susan, or are you suggesting you wanted to do?
I, I did do it in the past, and then they wanted to, I remember we wanted to give more board members opportunities, but I can certainly sit in if.
As long as it's not the same Thursday as policy, I think I can do it.
It's the first Thursday, like the first one is October 3rd.
I think if you've got my back, Patrick, in the days I can't do it.
So who is DEIJ?
Be Heather and me. All right. So why don't we spend a minute to go through, or a couple of minutes just to go through the committees that are on here, if there are any updates. Some of there, there may not be updates more than just the, some haven't been active yet, but we can talk about when these are scheduled and if there are additional conflicts, we can talk about them. The first committee that are on our list is DEIJ, Diversity Equity Inclusion, Diversity Equity Inclusion and Justice. And we, that committee hasn't met yet, but as Beth was just saying, that they're scheduled to meet at the beginning of the month, next month, Thursdays. The Policy Committee also hasn't met yet, right? But you just indicated that the first meeting is going to be in October.
Yes.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee, is there any update on Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
We, we have our first meeting on Friday morning at 8:00, and that's a remote meeting, which will be nice.
Okay, so this Friday, your meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The Wellness Committee, is there any?
That's actually changed. They, they eliminated school board. They didn't want, it was all school board members. They really wanted staff. So it's.
That's off the list now.
It's off the list.
Okay. All right. So we can take that off. School Safety and Security Task Force.
I think our first meeting is October 17th.
Correct.
At the high school.
And they tend, that group tends to meet quarterly. Sabbatical doesn't have anything scheduled yet. I think it depends when or not we got proposal for that. Strategic planning, we just talked about that with the schedule for that. Negotiations has started to meet. Had a, two meetings, I guess, so far to, we're negotiating this year with the paraprofessional staff, and so we started that process. Facilities has not had a meeting. That's more on an ad hoc basis on if there's a facility-related need to do some initial planning. So there's nothing scheduled for that. And then Wheelwright Trust does not have a meeting scheduled at this point.
Sure. Do you want me to talk about the word? Yes. So last year, as I recall, the board, the process that's used is they have an application process and a deadline, and then it goes to the committee, and then the committee brings forward some proposals. Oftentimes, when that happens, the board then struggles to approve or not approve because they have questions and the person's not here to answer those questions. So oftentimes, the committee has to take it back to the person, ask them for more information, and then, so it's very time-consuming on the administrative side to gather the information, et cetera. And so I was wondering if perhaps the board would consider shifting that Wheelwright Trust to maybe taking a year off this year, meaning that during that year, perhaps that committee meets three or four times and really tries to shift that focus to being a student-led proposal. For example, the board may present them with $10,000 to whatever group the committee comes up with, and then the students could really develop something. Maybe it's a, I don't know, grade five legacy and they take all year to develop something out. Or maybe it's student counselor, maybe it's in tandem, or I'm not sure. And so I would ask the board to consider maybe a plan like that so we can shift that, because oftentimes between the PTO and our end-of-the-year fund balance, we're able to fortunately often meet the needs for equipment or maintenance or, or a small project, things like that. And I think we missed the mark on the Wheelwright Trust, and the intent of that was really for a school-wide, student-driven something. And so we're about giving students voice, and so I'm wondering if the board would consider shifting that to really allow for student voice to be part of that, really the main driver.
I think we had suggested this like a couple of years ago, and I think we were coming out of COVID. Deanna, I think we've had this, like, we had this similar conversation and it was like, oh my gosh, it just felt like so much to even think about, like, how would we organize that? So I think also if we were able to, if the committee were to take the time to think about it and think about how to best support it, so it wasn't putting a lot of labor back on the teachers or if it's sort of in alignment with some of the goals, maybe even around things you want to do with the project or that you want to do with fifth graders. And I think that point that came up around sort of just how do we just take a step back and think about what is the PTO doing? What are, you know, what does our budget look like now? It could be, we just might be a little, take some of the, make it a little bit more efficient in terms of the process, but also to, to the point of just maybe more in alignment with how to support something that stays with the school, too, and that students can be involved in.
So I, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to have the discussion. I don't think we have to decide at this moment. I hear Esther's suggestion, and I think it's a good suggestion, but I think there may be other suggestions that come out as well, and that's why you have the discussion. And I don't think we're asking for the board to make a decision per se tonight. I guess the one decision that we would be making is about having a pause on sort of the current process. And I, I am in support of that because I, I think that for, you know, for all the reasons that have already been said. I mean, to, to give a little bit of a historical perspective, at one point in time, the PTO used to fund field trips at the school. Those, those were not built into the budget for the most part. They used to fund most of the after-school activities. Those we built into the budget over time. PTO used to provide 30 to 60 iPads and laptops for the school. Again, we built that into the budget because that's a real need that we can predict. So a lot of those needs that we can predict from year to year. This board and, or the amalgamations of boards over the years have been really responsive to that, and so have the voters about being supportive of that being built into a budget so that we can meet those needs. And so the number of requests for things for additional funds is pretty small. And it's pretty small numbers because most of those needs are already being met. And even if we, even the first year that we were right, when we approved, I think, three different proposals out of like 20, where I think we funded the other 12 or 14 or 16 through end-of-the-year funds. So, you know, they're great ideas in terms of wish lists, but there's, there's a lot of mechanisms to meet that need. So I think there's a real need to have a discussion about what the purposes are. And also we want to be, I, I think we should also be really cognizant of the time and effort that we're asking of the administrative staff to spend on this. It's relatively small amounts of money. It's a lot of work that goes into it, and, and we want to make sure that they have their time can be invested to really benefit students and benefit the school as a whole, not just on a sort of a pet project that the board has. I, I don't think that's what it is, but, you know, but we just have to be careful about how we're aligning our resources. So there's an opportunity to have a really good discussion about all this. And we had a discussion several years ago when we first got these funds about whether or not we would spend them all in the first year or we would, or we would have it, you know, sort of go through multiple years. And I think all those things could be on the table again, whether it's a $10,000 grant or it's a, you know, a $70,000 event. I mean, I don't think we have to, again, decide at this moment, but there's some, could be some really fun opportunities to open up that discussion again. So I guess we'd have to make a decision tonight about whether or not we wanted to sort of suspend the process, about the application process. It hasn't gone out yet, right, for this year, from what I understand? It's been paused. So, you know, before it would go out, we'd have to make that decision and, you know, give some direction about that.
I have just one question, just outstanding is the playground at Lincoln Street, and I know there were, was a need, there's need for more funding. What's the story?
So we did have to put in another piece.
Right.
We had some money from it.
Okay.
And when they came out and measured, there's not room to meet the safety standard.
I see.
So we're kind of tapped at that space out there that is on, on the rubberized surface.
Okay.
Is used at capacity.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that there may not be something else that we want to do outside that is more engaging with kids, but our initial thought is kind of on pause. but our initial thought is kind of on pause.
Okay. I have a question, only I saw a lot of discussion on social media this past week or two regarding a parent-child swing. And I don't know if that's something, I haven't gone to look, quite honestly. I feel terrible that I haven't been over yet to see it. So that's tomorrow's agenda. But there was just amongst parents, there was a lot of discussion about having an available in our community a swing. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's like an ADA, there's an adult sits on one side and a child on the other side. And, and there was talk about, is there anything in our area? Is there any availability? Was that?
There's one at the Purple Dinosaur Park.
Okay. Is that anything that we could or would want to think about adding to the swing set that we have, right?
We could look into it. We do have two ADA swings on our program for children. It's not like a tandem one.
Okay.
We could look at it. I mean, our swings get used a lot.
Yeah.
During the day, if we were to move two to put in one, but also maybe there's something we could add. So I don't know. I'll think about it.
Okay, okay.
Look at it so you might be able to be done.
Okay.
So Patrick, you're just suggesting, it's not saying that the committee, the committee would meet for a different purpose over the year to sort of assess the situation and kind of maybe make some recommendations?
Just sort of take some of this initial brainstorming feedback and build on it to come up with a recommendation sort of to the full board about what would be the path going forward. You know, and take a couple of meetings this year so that by early spring, say, there's sort of a decision. I mean, it could happen this fall. It doesn't have to take six months to decide, but it could be one or two meetings and come back to the board in December and say, yeah, we've landed on what we think makes the most sense. But, but to have a different sort of scope of that committee for this year, instead of approving applications for funding to really to rethink how, you know, what we should be doing with that process and that committee.
Is that because it's been underutilized in the?
I think, one, I think it's been underutilized. And I think also, I was trying to speak to the part that I think most of those applications that come forward, there are already means, they're typically for capital sort of improvements, if you want to think of it that way. And the funds are already available for that.
Right. So in the last year, there was an application, I remember you said that the budget should just cover this.
That's right.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's right. And so there didn't, there wasn't a need to do that. But, but we can't use end-of-the-year funds for an event, for a celebration, for example.
Okay.
For something that was a, you know, again, I don't, I don't think we need to flesh all this out, but there's, there are categories of things that we can't necessarily use those, those end-of-the-year funds for that might fit with this. But I think that's something the committee could talk about and decide. And I think, again, it's also, I think one of the concerns I have and I think some other people may have is that I think it takes a lot of time on the, you know, it's sort of staff time for something that really has, I don't know, I don't want to say it's not valuable because I'm not, I'm not trying to be dismissed with the projects. I love all the projects that have been approved. But it's, it's very resource-intensive for kind of what is produced. And it, and it's, and a lot of it is removed from student involvement, as Esther was pointing out. So there's not that learning opportunity. It really is just sort of educators recommending things and then a lot of back and forth about things. And then the board decides and it's, and students benefit from it, of course, but it's, it's become a very intensive process that I don't think is where it started. It's sort of, it started with a lot of ideas of having more student involvement and it's sort of gotten away from that. So it might be time to reset and just sort of rethink what happens with that and how we want to use the money.
I guess my only consideration is there may be, I don't know, there may have been some teachers or staff that had proposals they wanted to put in. And so just, I guess, maybe that's something else we should consider is just if someone was anticipating this application coming out very soon and had been working on an idea over the summer, how we want to handle those. Just only because it's, we sort of did say that we, I mean, I'm, I'm personally in favor of sort of taking a fresh look at it, but I just want to acknowledge that it's probably a surprise to some who may have anticipated proposing something. I'm not quite sure how to handle that, but I just want to acknowledge that that might be the case for some.
I mean, most of those things, I mean, before we had the Wheel Right Funds, like with the Sugar Shack starting and some other sorts of things, that a lot of those proposals just bubbled up and a staff member, you know, a teacher may have come forward and said, I have an idea. And then they would vet it with Esther and with the principals and whatnot. And they would sort of, you know, perhaps Rusty or someone like him to talk through sort of the logistics of it and say, I have this idea, it will cost this amount of money. Here's how it would work into the educational program, kind of, and, you know, it would get vetted before it would come to the board. And then they propose to the board that, is it something that you could support? And usually even mid-year, we can find some money in the budget to support those sort of things. So I think there's still a mechanism to support it. You know, probably not, not a $100,000 project in the middle of the year, but a, you know, a three to $10,000 project, we probably could support even mid-year. If that, you know, if there was a need for that or an interest in that.
Yeah, I think as long as, I mean, I don't know when the committee was supposed to meet, but maybe if it's, if we decide to go this route, that that's maybe a first meeting is just what will be the process if someone does have, so that people know. So that the communication around that is clear.
It does, it sounds like a lot of the questions brought up about it are communication issues. So I think, I think that makes sense.
We can have a meeting soon. And then if in case, if in fact, there are some considerations that are already being tossed around at either school, that can be something that we can incorporate or they could incorporate with their students and maybe fit into our new plan for the Wheel Right Funds. So that if we started soon, as you said, Patrick, it wouldn't negate having a request happen this school year, actually.
If that's the process that the committee wanted to do, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't negate that possibility. No, that's right. Yep. So.
It's just you right now, right?
Yeah. So I mean, I would, I think I would suggest that there be. I think it would make sense to have another board member join that group to sort of broaden the discussion. I don't know if there's someone on this group that has an interest in, in participating.
Sure. Tim? I will certainly do that.
Yeah. So can I add Tim to that group? So, so anyhow, so I, I don't know that we need to take any sort of formal vote right now. I think the main thing is this, that when that group meets the first time, they should make some threshold decisions about what the direction is going to be. You know, incorporating some of this discussion. Does that make sense? Okay. I think that was all, that's all the committee updates that we have. Right? And then so the, next we have new business. Is there anything that's new business? Now, we have a joint board meeting coming up next Monday. We do have on here, we don't have it listed as a separate topic. Oh, we do. I'm sorry. It's under old business. Is board goal. So why don't we hold off on that for a moment? Is there anything else that would fit under new business that we wanted to bring up? Okay, now let's go to old business, so to speak, which is the board goals. So we have these goals. I think we had this discussion before. We have these goals from, that we have sort of been, changed the dates on and they've, they've sort of been the goals for a few years. And there's.
I think these were new from last year.
Are they? Okay. So, so that's, so I'm wrong about that. But there's, there's nothing to say that we can't have the same goals for this year. There's, there's, there's not a need to change them just to change them. And there's nothing to say that we have to have five goals. It could be three goals. It could be seven goals. It just depends on, on what you think is important for the goal, for the board to list as goals. You know, one thing I would say about goals is that these goals are not going to incorporate everything that we do in the Exeter School District. I, it can't. I mean, even if you just look at the, at the committees, which the board is only involved in part of what happens, there's 10 different areas and not all of them are going to be reflected in these goals. They don't have to be comprehensive and sort of covering everything that happens and that if it's not mentioned in the goal, then somehow we don't think it's important. It really is just some different areas that we want to focus on, focus attention on this year. It could be either highlighting what's happening in those areas or asking for more updates on them than is typical. So that's, I mean, that's my philosophy on it, but I think there's more than one way to look at the goals.
I like the goals. I do like the goals. I feel like maybe more than five is a, is a little unwieldy. But my only question is, I also was part of drafting these goals, so I'm, so I'm biased. But I, I, I am curious, since we are sort of stewards of the budget and the finance it, if there should be a goal or if there has been in the past or language around that, that is there's something around, I mean, these are things that we want to see, right, supported through the budget. But I was curious if that's something we should be including in here just because that is a responsibility of ours explicitly.
Yeah, yeah. Usually there is an explicit budget goal because the primary role is policy and budget of the board anyway. So when you say things like support the efforts of, for example, academic achievement like you did by providing the Professional Development Day, by supporting the curriculum in the budget, those new additions of the new program. So that's really your measurements of supporting.
Right.
And so normally that's what you're looking at, either through policy or budgetary to.
I mean, that was my.
Achieve these goals.
That's where we, that's our role. So it's looking at this through the lens of policy. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So the five goals, just because everyone's not looking at this, the five goals that we have, one, the first one, I'm not going to read each goal in full, but the first one is about partnerships and effective communication lines with families and communities. The second goal is about ensuring that our schools are welcoming, including looking at DEIJ as a core value. And I've already said what that acronym means, so I won't explain that again. The third one is, is related to looking at efforts to close student achievement gaps and working on improving academic performance for all students. The fourth one is related to the ongoing development and review of safety and security measures. And then the fifth one is looking at social emotional wellness of our, of our school community and broader community. Well, it's really the school community, student, staff and school community. So those are the five areas that are touched on in the goals. What I would say is, why don't we leave it at this for today, is just, I know we said this before, is to think about it, but, you know, the summer sort of gets away and it's been three months since we had a chance to concretely think about it. But if there's any tweaks we want to make to these specific goals, is there an additional goal we want to add? If there's one that we think that has sort of, should fall away for some reason. I mean, sometimes we've had very specific goals, like to work on full-day kindergarten. That's not a goal, obviously, right now. And that, that was more, you know, as that need was met, there was no need to have that as a goal. These are things, the goals that are identified here are more enduring. They're not, they're not, I could see them being goals 10 years from now still. But why don't we just think about if there's any changes we want to make to the language? Or again, if there's an area that you really think hasn't been met? I mean, have they briefly suggested maybe something with policy or budgeting?
I'm going to retract that suggestion because I think that Esther's explaining it, that those are.
Yeah.
Those are by which we achieve the goals.
Right.
Budget and the policies.
Yeah. No, I think that's, that was a good explanation or response to that. But ultimately, it's up to us in terms of what we think the five goals should be or however many goals. All right. So why don't we just leave it there and we'll just think about it unless you have any other comments?
I just have a question and I'm sorry, it may sound ignorant. Is families an inclusive term? Because we say like parent. Yeah. So is there, is that word in here as inclusive as it could be? And I don't know if maybe we want to run it by like Abby or something.
I actually, I actually just had this conversation with our new equity, chief equity officer, because we were updating the reunification and it was so old, it still said parent, parents slash guardians. So we had families in there. And then for the purposes of that, we put, ended up putting designated pickup person. But that's for a reunification. And so the other word that she recommended or wanted us to think about was caregivers.
Caregivers. I wonder if.
Would she be willing to look at, like, take these?
Sure.
Take a look? And if there's anything else like that, I think that's a great observation, like that.
Sure. Yeah.
Proved on.
I can have her do that and make the recommendations.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other thoughts? All right. So I think that was it for old business. We don't have a non-public session that I'm aware of. I need to call one, right? Looking at the board members. Then that leaves us with a German. Thank you for coming today.